All right, good morning, everybody. We have a full audience today, and I am super excited to see all your faces, specifically those in the back row that we're going to get to in a little bit. Today is Wednesday, March 16th, and it's 9:00 AM, and we're here for the Marion County Board of Commissioners Board Session. We're in the Senator Hearing Room at 555 Court Street Northeast. And I just want to say, before we get to the Pledge of Allegiance, happy day before St. Patrick's Day, Commissioner Willis.
This is a great week. This is a great week.
This Irish man, where's your green tie?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. You can't get ahead of yourselves.
Although you should award it for the camera. Nonetheless, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are you just like, super jazzed for tomorrow?
Oh, I'm thrilled.
I'm actually surprised you don't look like, a little bit like a leprechaun today for the camera.
You know, I didn't even think about it.
Okay, well, next year.
If I had, maybe I would have.
That would have been Sam's job.
Well, that's it.
Okay, let's please start with public comment, and if Kathy Ottley has signed up, would you join us over here on this microphone? And for the record, please tell us your name and address.
Good morning. Kathy Ottley, 4426 46th Avenue Northeast, Salem, Oregon.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am a cancer survivor, and I am here today as a volunteer from the American Cancer Society's Cancer Action Network. And I'm here to share with you the connection of tobacco use and cancer. Tobacco-related illnesses continue to be the number-one cause of preventable death in Oregon, and accounts for more than the next six causes of death combined. According to the Oregon Health Authority, 591 Marion County residents will die this year because of tobacco. With the new statewide tobacco retail license program coming into effect, we are extremely hopeful to finally have some basic understanding of who is selling tobacco in our state. But the Marion County Commissioners have an opportunity to use this new tobacco retail license program to implement stronger local controls, including limits on advertising, coupons, and discounts, or even banning flavored tobacco products that are almost exclusively used by children. But any improvements in the existing regulations will save lives. I urge you to show the leadership this commission is known for, and use this opportunity to its fullest. As ACS CAN stands ready to help you with this effort in any way, I'm very honored to serve currently as the state lead ambassador for the volunteers in Oregon who fight back against cancer. Thank you for your time and consideration in joining our continued fight.
Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Have a good day. Is there anybody else who didn't sign up that wants to provide public comment? I think they're all here for the next presentation. So we'll just move into that. So Dakota and Sarah, if you'd please join us at the microphone. We're going to have a presentation of the 2021 Student Recycled Art Calendar Awards.
Wonderful, just introduce ourselves.
Yes, for the record.
Hi, y'all. My name is Dakota Tancredi, and I work with Marion County Environmental Services over at Public Works as a Waste Reduction Coordinator.
My name is Sarah Duncan, and I work for Mid Valley Garbage Recycling Association as a recycling coordinator.
Great. So as Commissioner Bethel said, we're here to celebrate our wonderful students, parents, all the guests that are here as well, in their contributions to the 2021 Recycled Art Calendars. This year, our theme was greenwashing. So the idea that sometimes companies will put unfounded claims or environmental claims about their products, and so being savvy consumers in terms of what we buy. So students, we're going to be reading off, starting with February, the winners. We'll invite you, one by one, to come up, take a picture with the Commissioners, and take your certificate, and then we will take one group photo at the end. Sounds good. And Sarah will have those folks. So I'll invite Commissioners, if you can come in front of the podium.
Oh, so we're not going to do like, a full presentation, and then a student at a time? I just want to make sure, so we're not going back and forth.
Oh, yeah. So the presentation will be February. A student will come up and take a picture with you, and you'll have the certificate there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Sarah.
I follow directions. I'm not clear.
Just follow along.
I've never been invited to give one of my long rants about greenwashing, but I mean, if you'd like me to come back, I can do that another time.
About what?
Greenwashing.
Greenwashing? I thought you said brainwashing.
Oh, no.
It's like, I mean, okay.
Oh, that's a completely separate TED Talk.
Right.
It says recycle on the bottom, but it's really not recycle.
Oh, yes, exactly.
Thank you, Commissioner. He's got it.
I'm a master recycler.
We appreciate that. All right, so thank you again for letting us come and present. This project has a long legacy, and we were really excited to be able to kind of revive it after the pandemic. So, all right. We're going to start with Hannah. Hannah is actually not able to be here today, and so we're going to recognize her anyway for her piece, and so this was her February art piece.
Do you want us to take a picture and send it to her with her art?
Actually, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Come on. Okay.
Thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have Natalie Volshak.
Natalie.
Natalie, come on up.
Join me up here, Natalie. Stand over here in the middle to be in the picture. All right, we're going to look, we're going to take two photos. First right, then left.
One, two, three.
That was my other right.
And then...
Congratulations. Thank you for doing this. I'm excited to go.
Congratulations.
And Natalie, if you just want to stand over here to the side, that way we can get a group photo all together at the end.
Thanks, Natalie.
That's just fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we have Ruby Morissette. Come on up.
Ruby. Hi.
Welcome.
We might as well, that way we all just know what we're doing.
Yep.
First right, then left.
One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Turn it over, Ruby.
Kira Arsena.
One, two. One, two, three.
Thank you. I'm excited to look at your photo in the calendar on the wall. Oh, wait, you're going to go over there.
Yeah. I'm over here.
Samantha Lyons.
I'm off task. I didn't actually look at the last two sides. No, I mean, I am.
It's okay, we provided you a paper copy.
Congratulations.
One, two. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Yes. My hands are cold. Sorry. No, you don't have to be sorry. It's hot in here. Okay.
All right. Xiaoteng, uh, yep. Leiashiaoteng. Come on forward.
Come on.
One, two. One, two, three.
Riley Johnson. Riley, are you here?
Not able to be here.
Okay, well, let's just take a picture. Give her a photo. I guess you're sleeping on the top.
You're the right man. He's the left.
Katie Flores.
Good job. I better be careful on my knee.
Thank you.
Danny Garcia Alvarez.
Do you go by Danny or Danielle? Uh, you can call me by both if you want.
That's perfect. I go by Danny and Danielle.
One, two. One, two, three.
There you go. Thank you.
Congratulations, Danny.
Josh Alexander.
Welcome.
How are you today?
Good.
Good.
Love your hat. You watch Yellowstone?
One, two. One, two, three.
Wait, just a sec. We're looking at the back of the room right now. Look that way.
Congratulations. Good job.
I saw those ones pop up. Thank you.
Lamani Porres.
I think we have one more. We're not in attendance.
It's okay. It's like it's a school day.
One, two. Oh, good job.
You threw me off.
These guys.
Paige Reed.
Is Paige here? Nope, not. Okay, perfect.
That's fine.
That's her district attorney's name.
It is. Thank you, John.
One, two. One, two, three.
And Lily Chase is our cover winner.
Oh, congratulations.
It is beautiful.
That's like the Tree of Life.
Fantastic. Okay, we're going to, is this three, Dad?
We'll go to Dad first.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Priorities. Priorities, that one and that one.
Three, oh, one, two, three, four.
We can count backwards.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I think you're all just going to come back over here for a group photo.
Yeah, so you guys go ahead and split half on either side, and then I'm just going to do a quick little thank you to everybody involved. Bonnie, Ryan, and Dakota were our judges. They did a lovely job. And no worries, parents and students that weren't in attendance, I will, I'll send you guys an email.
Yeah, we'll send you more photos as well, but yeah, that's great.
There you go. As long as we can see you, yeah.
Okay, you guys can give us a cam down here. Let's look at John over here. John, can you come in the middle?
Yes. Make sure I look at that. Okay, ready? Three, two, one, thank you.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, we'll do it again.
I'm talking.
My apologies.
Okay.
That's a little too far. Three, two, one, thank you.
Okay.
And then if I could have Lily just wait for a second, and then if everyone else wants to gather in the lobby, we're going to hand out some of your prizes and such.
Did everybody get photos?
Not yet.
Oh, still...
Yeah, sorry, I didn't have time.
Oh, I should have turned around, my goodness.
I think they're shooting over you.
I love, oh. Oh, yeah, I'll just step aside.
I think that's what he's doing, looking at that shot. One, two, three.
Could you say he knows what he's doing?
He does. He does.
I appreciate that.
He's not electrically, he does good work.
That's awesome.
Just kidding.
Okay, that's next.
All right, so if I could have Lily wait, because we're going to have you take a picture with Connie, and then if the rest of our winners and their parents want to go wait for us out in the little lobby area here, we're going to hand out some of your prizes.
And just so you know, the, all the photos that John took will be on our Facebook page, so you can get the direct shots if you'd like, if yours didn't turn out as good as you hoped. Thank you. Okay, exit stage left.
So with this program, the, the teacher of the winner also receives a small amount for the classroom as well, and so we want to make sure we got Connie in here.
Okay.
This is her camera that I can get mine. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you guys for doing this. I appreciate it.
We're not done yet. We've got two more cameras to go.
One, two, three.
And then the real camera.
And I just want to take a second while you're taking these photos to say Connie has been the heart and soul of this program for a long time, really making sure her students participate every year, sending in lots of submissions, and I just want to say how much we really appreciate that. So thank you very much, Connie.
Thank you.
It's great.
Yay.
Give Connie a hand.
Of course.
Thank you for your time.
Do we get the extra certificates?
Oh, and then the extra certificates are right here, Brenda in front of you. Okay, so we get onto the kids. Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah, for coming and taking care of all of that.
Oh, it was my pleasure. Anything for the kids, right?
Yes. Have a good day. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. Commissioner Cameron, would you please read that for us?
Sure, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to move the consent calendar. First item is under Finance Department to approve an order to sell a proposed list referenced Exhibit A of tax foreclosed properties in Marion County at a public auction on April 25, 2022. Next item is under Human Resources, approve a recommendation to establish and adopt classification number 423 Deputy Public Works Director. Yay. Under Public Works also schedule a final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance for March 23, 2022, granting comprehensive plan zone change CPZC case number 21-007 Deep Lake Investments LLC. Under Tax Office, approve an order of a property tax refund in the amount of $118,553.41 for the Commonwealth Property Management Tax Account number 532685. And finally, under Tax Office, approve an order for a property tax refund in the amount of $56,444.10 for the Commonwealth Property Management Tax Account number 571977.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And we're going to move on to action items, where Tom Kissinger is going to join us to consider approval of an order appointing Herschel Sangster as a citizen-at-large member to the Marion County Parks Commission with the term ending March 16, 2026. And Hersch is joining us, too, which is so great.
Happy to see you, Patrick.
Thanks, Hersch. Good to see you.
My mother was full Irish, and my dad was a best arm, so I, green was a very positive one.
You know, as my dad always told us growing up, the only people that matter are the people who love the Irish. Everybody who loves the Irish is Irish enough. There you go. Don't have to wonder who his people's parents are, grandparents, or anything like that. If you love the Irish, you're Irish enough.
Going down a path. Hersch, would you please introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Hersch Sangster. I live in 5158 Lacy Street in beautiful downtown Kaiser.
Thank you. Tom?
For the record, Tom Kissinger, Parks Program Supervisor, and we're here today to consider the appointment of Herschel Sangster as a citizen-at-large to the Marion County Parks Commission. Just kind of a background on the Parks Commission as a whole, Marion County Board of Commissioners formed Parks Commission on September 16, 1958. Commission membership consists of 11 citizen-at-large positions, and the terms of the individual positions are four years. With Hersch's appointment, we'll have nine members currently, and still seeking two more to join the commission. Marion County Parks Commission is a public body which, under its bylaws, makes recommendations to the Marion County Board of Commissioners. County's policy and the Marion County Parks Commission bylaws require that the Board of Commissioners make the final appointments, and all members serve at the pleasure of the Marion County Board of Commissioners. And we're very excited to have Hersch join us. He has a wealth of experience with state parks, planning, all kinds of different things. Plus, it's just fun to talk to. We're both fly fishermen, and I enjoy cycling, so our vice chair had to calm us down in the last meeting when we were talking about that. But we have another meeting tomorrow, and we're very excited to bring him on, and especially with all the work we've got going on in the canyon and in our valley parks, we're very excited to have his experience on the commission.
Thanks, Tom. Hersch, would you like to share anything?
Well, Tom was pretty good. I'm really excited to be appointed to the commission. There's some great work that's facing us, especially rebuilding the canyon, and to me, that is a priority right now, is as we rebuild the canyon, to rebuild it in a way that even more diverse groups can utilize those parks, not only seniors, disabled, fishermen, hikers, bikers, RVers, whatever we can do, we have the opportunity to do that now. And longer age coals, I'd love to work to bring Cycle Oregon back to the canyon.
That's fantastic.
Oh, that would be cool.
And full disclosure, I know Hersch well. He laughs. Hersch is also the 2019 Kaiser First Citizen recipient for the enormous efforts that he has done in Kaiser, but also throughout the Lamont Valley, and I encourage anybody who enjoys being on a bicycle to join the Monster Cookie Ride that Hersch facilitates, where lots and lots of folks come out, and I don't, how many miles is that?
Sixty-two, but this last year, we did a half cookie and a mini cookie, which was six miles.
I like both half cookies and mini cookies.
The problem is, is I always go back for the second half.
Right, right. And no matter how, how much you rode, you've got my wife's original recipe Monster Cookies.
Yeah, it's a great event. It's a great family event. Hersch, I'm really grateful that you said yes to this invitation to join this board, and I know that you're going to do great things for Marion County.
I'll also add, everybody knows me about bicycling, but my wife has been with horses most of her life. She was the equestrian coach at McNary. We also helped with horses with 4H, and even at Oregon State, when our daughter competed, we helped with Oregon State Equestrian. So we know horses, too.
There's a theme in the folks that I race with at Marion County, just so we're clear. Mostly, they're Beaver fans.
I'm beyond a Beaver fan. I'm, I'm season ticket holder for the last forty years. We go to gymnastics, equestrian, how about that baseball team?
Yeah, that's right. That's awesome. Well, thank you for being here. We look forward to ideas that you're going to bring, and all the recovery efforts at the canyon. Tom is visionary.
He sure is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, Commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, I believe, right?
We are, yes.
Yeah, so I'll be listening, at least for the first half, yes.
Sounds great.
Hersch, I just want to say thank you for, for serving in this way, because I know you're somebody who loves this community very, very much, and you serve Marion County in lots of ways already, and I know you need another meeting like you need a hole in your head, so...
Well, Marionian likes me out of the house.
But it really is a value to us to have people like you, who, you know, are part of the fabric of this community, to take some time and talk about sort of, you know, what the future should be and how we stay in continuity with the values of Marion County going forward. So I just really appreciate your participation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you please make a motion?
I sure will.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve an order appointing Herschel Sangster as a citizen-at-large member to the Marion County Parks Commission with the term ending March 16, 2026. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thanks, Hersch. It's nice to see you in person.
We'll probably see you at the April 2nd.
No, I won't be there, but I'm sure you'll have a great time for me.
Sure will.
Thank you. All right, moving on, Ryan Matthews will be joining us to consider approval of incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $804,624 for the county to provide exceptional needs care coordination, ENCC, for individuals participating in choice model services retroactive to January 1, 2022 through June 31, 2022.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Sorry, I paused, because the years are odd to me now. I'm used to two-year spans, not one. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ryan Matthews, the Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services, and I am here seeking a one-year contract with Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $804,624, and just for frame of reference, this is the same contract amount as the last one-year period contract that we had. This contract actually funds our choice model services, which promote community-based services and supports, and basically is an attempt to try and provide services to individuals at the lowest level possible. So this is aimed at a population that is at risk of, or potentially has already been in the Oregon State Hospital, in psychiatric hospitalization, inpatient services, or in residential treatment homes, and the goal is to continue to move on the continuum to get them into lower levels of care. The good thing about these funds is that they're flexible, and they're meant to fill in gaps that Medicaid and other funding sources can't cover, so we can utilize these funds for things that might be a barrier for people, such as room and board payments, guardianship services, utility payments, rental assistance, some of those types of things. There's also, as you mentioned, the exceptional needs care coordination, which that is work that we do in conjunction with inpatient psychiatric hospitals and Oregon State Hospital to coordinate discharge planning and placement of individuals that are ready to transition out of those higher levels of care. We work with the individual, their treatment team, and any natural supports that they have, which would be friends and family, to work on having a wrap support plan to make sure people have the supports that they need and are successful as they make that transition into lower-level services. We have our own staff that go out into residential homes to provide skills training and other supports, and try to assist individuals in improving their, their life skills, so things like, you know, just daily living skills, cooking, money management, shopping, those types of things. We have staff that, that help individuals who may be residing in, in home or community based, receiving community-based services. And for a frame of reference, this serves a little over 200 people per month that we serve under this contract, and we have about eight or nine staff that are kind of a, a part of the team that, that are doing this work. I just, and so I don't know if, if there's any other questions that any of you may have about this contract?
I don't have any, Commissioner Cameron?
Nope.
No?
Oh, great.
Yay.
Good one.
This group of work was really easy to review.
Yeah.
Which is usually where my questions come from.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it is, it is very targeted at a specific population, specific types of services, which makes it really clear in terms of what we can utilize these for.
Great, thank you. Mr. Cameron?
Ready? Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $804,624 for the county to provide exceptional needs care coordination for individuals participating in the choice model services retroactive to January 1, 2022 through December 31, 2022.
And I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a good day. And next, Tom's going to join us again to consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for Marion County Parks to operate and maintain, woo-hoo, the North Saniam State Recreation Area through December 23, 2023. Very excited about this, by the way.
Me, too. So, yes, we're here to consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement for operations and maintenance of North Saniam State Recreation Area, which is located between Mahama and Mill City, and Marion County Parks will take over that maintenance and operations as soon as this is fully executed. So a lot of this is to facilitate temporary housing for wildfire survivors.[1403.75] And even at Oregon State, when our daughter competed, we helped with Oregon State Equestrian. So we know horses, too.
There's a theme in the folks that I recruit to Marion County, just so we're clear. Mostly, they're Beaver fans.
I'm beyond a Beaver fan. I'm a season ticket holder for the last forty years. We go to gymnastics, equestrian. How about that baseball team?
That's awesome. Well, thank you for being here. We look forward to ideas that you're gonna bring and all the recovery efforts of the canyon. Tom is visionary.
Sure is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're gonna have a meeting tomorrow afternoon, I believe, right?
We are, yes.
Yeah. So I'll be listening, at least for the first half. Yes.
Sounds great.
Hersch, I just wanna say thank you for serving in this way. Because I know you're somebody who loves this community very, very much. And you serve Marion County in lots of ways already. And I know you need another meeting like you need a hole in your head, so.
Well, Marionian likes me out of the house.
But it really is of value to us to have people like you
Yeah.
who are part of the fabric of this community to take some time and talk about sort of, you know, what the future should be and how we stay in continuity with the values of Marion County going forward. So I just really appreciate your participation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you please make a motion?
I sure will. Madam Chair, I move that we approve an order appointing Herschel Sangster as a Citizen at Large member to the Marion County Parks Commission with a term ending March 16th, 2026.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thanks, Hersch. It's nice to see you in person.
We'll probably see you at the April 2nd.
No. I won't be there, but I'm sure you'll have a great time for me.
Sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, Ryan Matthews will be joining us to consider approval of incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $804,624 for the county to provide Exceptional Needs Care Coordination, ENCC, for individuals participating in Choice Model Services retroactive to January 1, 2022 through June 31, 2022.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Sorry, I paused because the years are odd to me now. I'm used to two-year spans, not one.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Ryan Matthews, the Administrator with Marion County Health and Human Services. And I am here seeking a one-year contract with Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $804,624. And just for frame of reference, this is the same contract amount as the last one-year period contract that we had. This contract actually funds our Choice Model Services, which promote community-based services and supports, and basically is an attempt to try and provide services to individuals at the lowest level possible. So this is aimed at a population that is at risk of, or potentially has already been in the Oregon State Hospital, in psychiatric hospitalization, inpatient services, or in residential treatment homes. And the goal is to continue to move on the continuum to get them into lower levels of care. The good thing about these funds is that they're flexible, and they're meant to fill in gaps that Medicaid and other funding sources can't cover. So we can utilize these funds for things that might be a barrier for people, such as room and board payments, guardianship services, utility payments, rental assistance, some of those types of things. There's also, as you mentioned, the Exceptional Needs Care Coordination, which that is work that we do in conjunction with inpatient psychiatric hospitals and Oregon State Hospital to coordinate discharge planning and placement of individuals that are ready to transition out of those higher levels of care. We work with the individual, their treatment team, and any natural supports that they have, which would be friends and family, to work on having a wrap support plan to make sure people have the supports that they need and are successful as they make that transition into lower-level services. We have our own staff that go out into residential homes to provide skills training and other supports, and try to assist individuals in improving their life skills. So things like, you know, just daily living skills, cooking, money management, shopping, those types of things. We have staff that help individuals who may be residing in home or receiving community-based services. And for a frame of reference, this serves a little over 200 people per month that we serve under this contract. And we have about eight or nine staff that are kind of a part of the team that are doing this work. I just, and so I don't know if there's any other questions that any of you may have about this contract?
I don't have any. Commissioner Cameron?
Nope.
No.
Okay, oh, great.
Yay!
That's easy.
Good one.
This group of work was really easy to review.
Yeah.
Oh, good, good deal.
Which is usually where my questions come from.
Yes, yes. Yeah, it is very targeted at a specific population, specific types of services, which makes it really clear in terms of what we can utilize these for.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Cameron?
Ready? Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Health Authority in the amount of $804,624 for the county to provide Exceptional Needs Care Coordination for individuals participating in the Choice Model Services retroactive to January 1, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
And I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Have a good day.
Thank you, too.
And next, Tom's gonna join us again to consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement of the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for Marion County Parks to operate and maintain, woo-hoo, the North Saniam State Recreation Area through December 23rd, 2023. Very excited about this, by the way.
Me, too. So, yes, we're here to consider approval of the intergovernmental agreement for operations and maintenance of North Saniam State Recreation Area, which is located between Mahama and Mill City. And Marion County Parks will take over that maintenance and operations as soon as this is fully executed. So a lot of this is to facilitate temporary housing for wildfire survivors. We've entered in negotiations with Oregon Parks and Recreation Department to kind of take over these operations and maintenance on this IGA and then lead to an eventual land transfer. Those conversations are continuing. But the purpose of this IGA is to transfer park property maintenance services to county park staff and facilitate that potential transfer in the future. It is retroactive from January 1 through December 31 of 2023, and the purpose of that is to keep that two-year timeline as we move forward. There are no funds or property being transferred by this agreement, but the agreement does allow for the development of cabins on the site with approval and input from OPRD. And just kind of a personal note, this site is actually where I was on Labor Day just before the fires. And I remember sitting at the river there and thinking to myself, I love this park. I would love for this to be a Marion County Park. And it is amazing to me that we're here, you know, two years later and actually doing this. So it's very exciting. And we are ready to go. We've got, we're coordinating with the host on site. We're getting equipment in place, and all of our maintenance staff is ready to begin as soon as we get this signed, so.
So this agreement allows and/or requests for the host to stay, correct?
Correct.
And is it a seasonal host or a year-round host?
It's a year-round host. The camping at the site is seasonal, but the host does stay year-round to help maintain the property, take care of kind of the daily maintenance needs. And then our staff shows up to do more of the heavy lift.
What kind of camping? It's tent camping, isn't it?
There are ten tent camping sites currently at the site. They were closed last year due to the fire, but we actually have volunteers on September 11th to come out and do a lot of cleanup, so.
How many volunteers did you have?
I think it was 200 total.
That's right.
Yeah. And they also helped.
Matt Lawyer coordinated, who works for the county. I'm sure most people have seen him, in partnership with Dan Kohler from the Kaiser LDS Church. And they took up 200 volunteers and did an amazing job
Yep.
of getting that park up and ready. I have to tell you, I'm in awe every time they show up.
Yep.
Very excited for this.
They even built a trail, which was amazing to me.
They did build a trail. Yeah, they want it to be more accessible, and it's gonna be great. I'm excited. So, any questions, Commissioners?
No.
No.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, perfect. Well, then I will take a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for Marion County Parks to operate and maintain the North Saniam State Recreation Area through December 23rd, 2023.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just maybe a question. Tom, does this mean we'll change out the signs and all that stuff?
We will. We've got signs ready to go, so we'll start changing them out as soon as this is fully executed.
Fantastic. We, yeah, that's great.
I wanna know when that sign is up, the new one. I'm gonna go take a picture.
We should go up there when they're putting it in the ground.
We should.
Yeah.
I was actually talking to Yancey just before they stepped out. I was like, we should coordinate something for that.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. I even spend a lot of time at the canyon. And then the coming events, I'm going up there today
There you go.
to look at some housing sites. I'm very excited.
Very cool.
Anyway, okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Thanks, Tom, for all your work on this.
Thank you.
All right. Brian Nicholas is gonna join us for the next two items. The first is to consider approval of Amendment Number One to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division to add $390,000 for a new contract total of $6,307,947, and extend the date through December 31, 2023 for the North Fork Road Slide Stabilization Project. Sorry, that's awful.
Good morning. I'm Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director. Ryan Cruther isn't able to be here today, so I'm just standing in for him.
Don't you love the presentation?
Just like the good old days.
All right. In fact, I remember presenting to the board about this original IGA that we're doing the work under right now, so. All right, so this is related to the landslide, the big landslide on North Fork Road. I'll give you a little bit of background information and then talk about what this agreement is all about. So this map shows where the landslide is located. Sorry, it is a little bit hard to see. There we go. Use the mouse as a pointer. North Fork Road is this pink line right here, and about mile point four is that large landslide. There's an aerial view of it. So we've been working on this landslide. In fact, the landslide happened in about 2009. And for about two years, folks that lived upriver of the site, they had to take Gates Hill Road to get home. It was quite an issue, particularly in the winter, when that road's not easy to drive. But in 2011, we completed, the county completed a federal highway-funded emergency response project to repair this segment of the road. That was, the slide started to move about that time, but this part right here catastrophically failed, and the road went down the hillside. So we had an emergency response project that was federal highway-funded to stabilize this portion of it. That's where you go up and you see a bunch of retaining wall holding up the road. That's that location. Two years later, Federal Highway gave us the funding to study what was happening for the rest of the slide area. And for better or worse, that engineering firm that did that assessment, they broke the slide up into three. It just looks like one big slide, but they broke it up into three separate slide masses. So that's why you see this, the original slide was Slide 1, and then they had three more slides that they characterized in that report. And that report, they did some fieldwork, put three drilled wells on the hillside just to monitor, tried to locate where the failure plane under the slide was at, and monitor groundwater and how much the slide was moving. That project produced an estimate of about $6.5 million. That was their estimate to stabilize, the cost to stabilize the entire hillside. So about five years ago, we submitted a FLAP grant application using that estimate as the estimate. And we've been working really closely. When you're dealing with something this large and working directly with Federal Highway, Western Federal Lands, we work really close with their staff. So their geotechnical engineer's been working with us the whole time. We went into the current project that was funded under this original FLAP agreement, knowing that additional geotechnical site work needed to be done to fully characterize the site. The original assessment was just a preliminary. And so they started that work two years ago, installed some additional wells on the hillside, and refined the analysis. And their conclusion was the stabilization cost for the Slides 2, 3, and 4 was not $6.5 million, it was maybe closer to $25 million.
What?
So, so we sat down with Federal Highway and said, okay, let's figure out what our strategy is gonna be. And we have our current contractor, the consultant that's working on this, we had them prioritize. We had them assess Slides 2, 3, and 4, and tell us which of those slides was most likely to catastrophically fail next. And they said, well, clearly Slide 2 is the one that is most likely to fail in a way that takes the road with it. Slide 3 and 4, they're slow-moving creeping landslides. Worst-case scenario, we could just continue to maintain that gravel surface, build up the shoulders, and keep that going for as long as we needed to. But if we needed to address one item most urgently, it is stabilizing landslide 2. You can kind of tell from this picture, these steep slopes are much more prone to sliding than these more gentle slopes. So, so working with Federal Highway to work out a strategy, we landed on the following strategy. Let's prioritize Slide 1. Let's use the existing funding, FLAP funding, that Federal Highway has awarded to us, and we will focus on Slide Number 2. And then we'll use successive FLAP rounds, rounds of FLAP funding in future years to pick away at Slides 3 and 4. So instead of trying to stabilize the entire hillside with this existing contract, we're gonna focus on Slide Number 2. And, but even the cost of that is more than the current $6.5 million funding that's in our current FLAP grant. The total cost is just about $10 million. So we worked out a plan, you know, funding strategy with the FLAP committee at Federal Highway, and that's what we're gonna go through next. Actually, I'll give you a little snapshot here of what our final solution for that Slide Number 2 looks like. This orange area here, that's competent bedrock. The yellow area, that's the slide mass. And that purple line is sort of the approximation of where the failure plane is between this upper layer of material and this competent base rock. This right here, this represents where the road will be located when it's finally repaired. And we are just going to dig out a big hole and put a stone embankment. So the stone embankment will be strong enough to hold, you know, hold back this bit of land that wants to move. And the final solution will also include some horizontal drains, weep holes. If you drive out, if you drive Highway 20 out to Newport, you'll see in the new roadway section, there's lots of pipes coming out the hillside that dribble water. That's exactly what you'll see here. In fact, this failure, these failure mechanics that this cartoon describes, this is exactly the same type of mechanism that led to those Highway 20 failures and all the extra work that ODOT had to do there to open that road. So this is our, this is our solution. And the nice thing about it is, there's not a lot of unknowns with this solution. We can bid it and have a pretty good idea of what the final construction cost is gonna be. All right. So here's how the numbers work. Our original grant funding is about $6.5 million. Now, part of this funding strategy is Federal Highway is gonna give us enough FLAP funding to complete the design phase. That's the phase we're in right now. And they are expecting that when the next round of FLAP funding opens up, our first application we're gonna make is for the construction funding to complete this. So that's why you'll see in this agreement, all it does is add $390,000. It doesn't add, in fact, this graphic doesn't even show you the full, this shows you what the results of this proposed amendment to the funding agreement. When we come back for another amendment, the $7 million number will be just over $10 million. But this agreement just gets us funded for the completion of the design phase, adding the $390,000 in additional funding. That increases the total grant dollars to $6.3 million and the total project budget at this point of a little over $7 million.
So how long does the design phase take?
I think we have about another 10 months.
Oh, gosh.
And we'll be ready for bidding.
So.
Actually, you know, we do need to work out some property. Ferris Lumber owns the property either side. And some of this road has moved enough that it's no longer in the legal right-of-way. We have to decide whether it's gonna stay where it is, or we're gonna move it back up the hill. So we have some work to do with Ferris. And obviously, to build that big stone buttress, part of that is on Ferris's property. So we have some property work to do there that may, that may straighten things out a little bit longer than the 10 months.
So when do you think you'll actually, like, dig a hole?
I think we're gonna build, I think we're gonna bid it the winter of 2024, and we're gonna hit the ground in construction 2025.
Okay. And then how long will it take? So before, you talked about that first landslide, people that lived north or east of it had to go Gates Hill Road. This is gonna cause an issue, right, for transportation, so they'll have to go another route.
Yep. So that is something we'll be talking with folks that live up North Fork. Let's go back to that cartoon. So you can see, we are gonna dig out a portion of the roadway to put the stone buttress in. We're leaving enough of a bench for construction equipment to get through the site, but yes. And we're gonna try to do this primarily in the summer, so that we're not asking people to drive Gates Hill Road in the winter. But we will be closing North Fork Road at mile point four and asking people to use Gates Hill Road for the summer. That'd be the summer of 2025.
Okay.
I'm sure. At least we're not doing it right now with everything else going on up there.
Yeah, for sure.
It's good that we're delaying. I mean, the construction's not gonna happen until three years from now, so.
It absolutely needs to happen. I just, you know, thinking ahead.
We wanna get it done, but, yeah.
We do, and hopefully, there'll be some recreation opened by then. And so I'm just trying to put all the pieces together, the challenges that Public Works is gonna have to manage
Yep.
when we do open the road back up for the public. And then shut down this section, you know, what does it look like to move people around? You have a lot on your plate, Brian. You're doing a great job.
There's a lot going on. Yeah, so this'll be, there'll be a lot of public outreach, like you said, recreationally as well as the folks that live on North Fork Road. I envision some detour signing on Highway 22 that's telling people to wanna get, if the, if the shoots, I mean, sorry, Detroit National Forest is open, and they, and folks can use North Fork Road to get there, the Forest Service is gonna wanna have some recreational signing telling people how to get there. We have our parks that are upstream of mile point four that we're gonna wanna communicate with as well. So I see quite a lot of outreach, information on our website, and some roadside detour signing as well.
Because there's not really a turn point, turn around, once you get to this area. If people miss the signs that say you need to go around, they can't really turn around, right? And get back. It's pretty narrow.
Right. Pioneer Road is probably your best place to turn around, and that's two and a half miles down river.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I have all the questions.
Oh, no. No, and it's hard, you know, sometimes we have to make decisions. Sometimes we just don't have a whole lot of options, and so if it's gonna be a road closure, we just try to make sure that that road closure is as successful and amenable for people as we can make it.
Sure. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Cameron, if you would, please. Oh.
Yeah, I'll talk about it later. It's not a big deal.
Okay.
I was just thinking of all the, all the work we do on that road, and then we're gonna have a bunch of construction trucks driving up and stuff, so anyways.
Well, and I appreciate you staying on this. I mean, I think this is something that was new to me as a Commissioner, is just like how long it takes to get these projects done, and how much work goes into it, and how we need people like you and your team to, like, stay on it every single day, year after year after year. Because if you don't, it just doesn't get done, right? So I appreciate sort of you staying on this and talking to Federal Highways and keeping this on the front burner. Because I think an average person can be like, man, it takes 15 years to fix a road. Like, how can this possibly be? It's gonna take a lot longer if you didn't have people like you actually bird-dogging this. So just thanks for staying on it.
All right. I'll move the motion, if you're ready for that.
I am, please.
So, Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve Amendment Number One to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division to add $390,000 for a new contract total of $6,307,947, and extend the date through December 31st, 2023 for the North Fork Slide Stabilization Project.
And I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. And we'll move on to the next, to consider approval of Amendment Number Three to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division to add one million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirteen cents for a contract total of two million, three hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirteen cents for the North Fork Road and Gates Hill Road Chip Sealing Project through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
All right. Again, I'm Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director, standing in for Ryan Cruther. All right. This is another North Fork Road project. So, folks who live on North Fork Road remember well that two summers ago, we installed a chip seal on North Fork Road and Gates Hill Road. And we used Federal Land Access Program funding through Federal Highway to buy all the materials for that chip seal. We provided the labor and equipment. Federal Highway paid the, bought the materials for us, and we got that project done two summers ago. In fact, we were striping the week before the wildfires hit. And as a result of the wildfires, the pavement on North Fork Road has been impacted pretty heavily. I mean, the, the eastern stretch up near Elkhorn, just the heat alone has degraded the pavement. And now, if you, if you drive it, you'll see, not potholes, but you'll see where the top layer of asphalt, sometimes it's the chip seal, sometimes it's the actual two-inch lift of asphalt underneath the chip seal, it's sloughed away from just all the truck equipment and track equipment that's been removing trees, timber skidding, removing wildfire debris, all that stuff. In fact, the, the chip seal is compromised, you know, up by Elkhorn to the extent where the asphalt was literally evolving out of the asphalt and tracking on people's vehicles last summer. So, we approached Federal Highway, the flap program, right after the fire, and they basically said, what do you need? Let's try to find resources to, to, to help the wildfire counties, and this is what we landed on. We're using the existing chip seal contract because it's expedient, but what we're actually doing is putting another two-inch structural overlay on this road. So, that's what this project is all about. We're gonna put another two-inch structural overlay on the road. That will provide some additional structural depth, so even though the asphalt below has been weakened by the fire, we have enough structural capacity there for this, for the pavement to stand up for a good, long while. Here's some pictures of the chip seal work that we did last summer and what the end results looked like. This project will put a two-inch overlay on the entire corridor, including Gates Hill Road. Then we'll re-stripe it, and we should be good for the long haul. The plan is to go ahead and put our, we're putting, actually putting the bid documents together right now. We'll bid the, the work this fall. There's a window right after paving season wraps up, which is the sweet spot for bidding, you know? Pavers have a, finally have some breathing room to actually bid on projects, and it's not in the spring when they already have projects on the books. So, the plan is to bid it this fall and then hit it during the spring of next year. And that way, by the time end of summer comes around, if, if everything up the canyon is stabilized and the board decides to reopen North Fork Road to recreational traffic, this will already be done. This, this piece will be in place.
So, I, I don't know where Commissioner Cameron was going before with his thought, but when he talked about traffic on kind of the road repairs, we're planning to put a bunch of heavy equipment on a road we're now repairing. Is the road gonna need more repairs after it's repaired now, future?
It could be, but you know, we're just talking gravel trucks. I mean, it's, it's, the, the lower stretch of the road was not as heavily impacted by the fire as the upper stretch, so. The, the flap committee has given us the resource to do the entire road, so we're gonna do it and just get it done.
Strengthen it.
Yeah. But I don't see, I don't see the landslide repair project having a really big impact on the pavement condition.
Okay. Great. Is that where you're going?
Yeah, that's where I was thinking.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions?
You guys are so clever.
We try. Sometimes we do. All right. Well, if there's no other questions, Commissioner Wilson, if you please, make a motion.
All right. Madam Chair, I move that we approve Amendment Number Three to the Incoming Funds Intergovernmental Agreement with Western Federal Lands Highway Division to add one million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirteen cents for a new contract total of two million, three hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirteen cents for the North Fork Road and Gates Hill Road Chip Sealing Project through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion passes. Before you run off, Brian, I just wanna say that yesterday, we received an email from Oregon Housing and Community Services, which I know you were a part of, and I was with the Commissioners at a retreat, and I was running around, like, look at this email.
You were pretty happy about that email.
I'm, you guys, I don't think I can describe how happy I am. So, for a year, Brian has been a part of a team with myself and Jan and Matt Lawyer and a few others to work with Oregon Housing and Community Services to get temporary housing back up in the wildfire area. And they've been, we've heard about it in the board session multiple times about, we call it Gates, Evans Haven, that's in Gates where the motel was. And yesterday, the tiny homes for that space started the order process. So, Brian confirmed that by July, we should be ready to start seeing things move in. If there's some delays in construction, we can still receive those units and store them to be on track to try to get folks in, no later than the end of September is my hope. But that sixteen families that were able to move back up to the canyon into their community for a period of time while they transition into other housing, which is hopefully gonna be built in the next couple of years. So, I just, I know you're super busy, and you're so attentive to these emails. I just wanna tell you how deeply grateful I am for your quickness to make sure that, because we know that if we give them a day, they're moving on to a different direction at the state level, and we need to keep their attention, and you're doing a great job. I'm really grateful for you, and I know these families will be too once they're there, so. You guys, I can't wait for these homes to be up there. It's gonna be amazing. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Roads and homes and all the things, you're doing it, and I appreciate it.
We're doing our best.
Yeah, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Have a great day. So-
My turn?
Yes, it's your turn. Brendan's gonna bring us the contracts starting with Kevin, so we can move through them.
I'm gonna read the calendar. Today is March sixteenth. We just completed our board session here in the Senator Hearing Room on the first floor of five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. I guess, right after this meeting, there's a Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance Collaborative Committee meeting, which is virtual. And then at one-thirty this afternoon on March sixteenth, we have a BOC CIO meeting with an executive session if needed pursuant to ORS one-nine-two-point-six-six-zero-A-B-C-D-E-F-H-I, and that's located in the Commissioners' Boardroom. Okay. On the fifth floor of this building, that's five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow is March seventeenth, the greatest day of the year, Saint Patrick's Day. So, mark your calendars. It's gonna be fabulous. And we're starting the day off with a Salem Marion County meeting at eight o'clock at Sassy Onion. That's twelve forty-four State Street in Salem. And then at nine o'clock, still Saint Patrick's Day, in case you were wondering, we're gonna have a work session regarding the Department of Health and Human Services properties located in Commissioners' Boardroom. That's the fifth floor of this building, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then at eleven-thirty a.m., still Saint Patrick's Day, State and Sublimity Seventy-Sixth Annual Chamber Awards at Foothills Church, located at nine-seven-five Fern Ridge Road in Stateon. That's all we have on Saint Patrick's Day, unfortunately, on the calendar. But the day after Saint Patrick's Day is still a good day. You can still wear green if you'd like. That's Friday, March eighteenth. At ten a.m., we're gonna tour the cornerstone apartments located at two-five-four-zero Rose Garden Street Northeast in Salem. And then at one in the afternoon on March eighteenth, we have an emergency evacuation training located in the Commissioners' Boardroom. That's the fifth floor of this building, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then Tuesday, March twenty-second, at nine-thirty in the morning, we have a management update located in the Commissioners' Boardroom, fifth floor of this building, again, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. Tuesday, March twenty-second at noon, we have a Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Executive Committee, Committee Meeting, and that is virtual. And then on Wednesday, March twenty-third, at nine a.m., we have board session again here in the Senator Hearing Room. That's the first floor of this building, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then on Wednesday, March twenty-third, at one-fifteen in the afternoon, we have a BOC Policy Analyst Meeting located in the Commissioners' Boardroom on the fifth floor of this building, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. So, there you have it. There's your calendar.
Do you know why this is the greatest week ever besides back that it's Saint Patrick's Day tomorrow?
No. Why?
Because it's my anniversary week.
Oh, congratulations. That's a big deal. Good job.
That's good. That's a good one. You know, and the other one, day, the greatest day of the year may be April first, too, you know, you never know.
April Fool's Day?
Is that, is that an important day, Commissioner?
Has nothing to do with April Fool's Day.
What happened on April first?
It's all about me.
Today? Was a certain Commissioner born on April first?
Yeah.
Grace us, grace the world with his presence?
Nineteen fifty-six. April Fool's Day fell on Easter Sunday, so I'm a saint and a fool.
It was like a, it was like a star from heaven fell down.
I'm, that's why you get bipolar.
A star from heaven fell down, and Commissioner Cameron was born.
I'm on both sides of the fence.
I think this might be the luckiest anniversary for me, going back to that.
How many years?
It's eighteen years on the eighteenth day.
Hey, that's great. Congratulations.
Yeah. I, my husband and I, we didn't have a wedding. We just, we signed papers at our kitchen table.
Oh.
Yeah, I know, people were really-
There you go. Are you, are you, are you thinking of, of having some sort of celebration this year?
No.
No.
I'm gonna go out to dinner with some of my best friends and just enjoy each other.
You weren't inviting, you weren't inviting us in otherwise.
You're welcome to come. I mean, it's, I mean, I think I'm a good time anywhere. On Friday, I'm gonna be exceptionally happy. My husband and I were just saying the other day, it's crazy that it's been eighteen years.
That's a big deal.
It moves, moved by so, so fast. But, anyway, so, happy anniversary, Nathan, in front of the whole world. He's a great guy, and for those that haven't met him, I hope you do, he's so much fun.
There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Okay, great. Well, with that, we will adjourn today's board session. Have a great week and happy Saint Patrick's Day, everybody.
All right.
All right.